The meeting order will start with the pledge and leases.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll maintain the motion to the Colonel for meeting. So, um, second, second, Colonel for meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's a notification of the open meetings act as posted in the back of the room. Rule call, Chance.
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike, here, myself, here.
Yep.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Number five, approve the agenda. Think we got it.
No, just.
Motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
Alright, I'll move. You second. You do this second. Approve the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Number six, the consent agenda. Starting with the minutes. Regular meeting. Budget meeting. Well, that looks good for the financial report.
Good month for revenue, you can see we, uh, we did go ahead and already, um, moved the money to depreciation that was budgeted. Uh, as well as the money back to billing funds, so billing fund is paid in full, reimbursed in full.
And the Midwest Bank meeting, that's the last one, right?
One more to go.
One more.
Yep, next June.
Next June.
Right about that same amount.
Move on to the claims as well.
You'll notice in the claims this month, there's not just the general fund claims, there is also nutrition from last month, the activities from last month, and buildings from last month, that is per the auditor. When you approve the consent agenda, we have to have all of the claims in for all of the funds.
Figure that must fit something, I would suggest.
Yes.
It's kind of nice when you see them.
Yes.
I like your name.
Yes. Those will always be a month in arrears because they can pay off through the month, that's where general fund only gets paid once when you got to prove that, so.
More questions on the claim. If not, we're gonna take a motion into approve the consent agenda.
Also move?
Second. Move the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. She carry. Number seven, student presentation. Anything tonight?
Nothing.
Number eight, public comment. Anybody that wants to talk tonight? Then we will move to number nine. Board development, page thirty-five, thirty-six. Got to deal with all the skill.
Just thought it was good to, uh, maybe, you know, for the most part, just reinforce, uh, you know, your routine practice to, uh, work through policy review. And then also thought I'd just, you know, take this opportunity to show you where all our policies can be found on the school website, uh, or on the school app. So if you don't have the Play Me Public School app, uh, recommend that you put it on your phone, uh, it's, although they're a little tougher to read on your phone. But I will pull that up. Okay, so the, the Play Me Public School app, which you can find in the app store on your iPhone, or what's it called, Android?
Apple Store.
The what?
Apple Store.
The Play Store. Okay, so it looks like this, and from here you just go down to the website. And so when you click on the website, and it's gonna want me to actually log out of the school, off the school filter. So, for some reason, my phone doesn't like the school filter. So I'm gonna go back to the website. Okay, and then it's under district information. Board of Ed policies. Okay, so, again, you know, they're, they're all listed here, not incredibly easy to read from here, but, uh, highly accessible. So if we were to go to just any given policy, you know, you would find, uh, four oh two oh nine, recognition for service of employees. So this would look like your hard copy, but just obviously, uh, a little different to read, and even down at the bottom, you can see when it was last reviewed. Okay, so, um, so all accessible from your phone, your laptop is easier if you go to school website, your laptop, same thing, upper left-hand corner, you go to district information, and board of ed policies will be listed under that.
That's all I have. That's all you've got, man. Sure you have?
But, uh, really recommend that you download the Play Me Public School app, you know, it's just, again, uh, it's, uh, it's just good for accessibility. It's probably not your go-to if you really want to study something. But you have it with you wherever you are.
Yeah, question, how often, how long does it take to get through the manual?
It's, well, we're several years in, and we're not all the way through. So, we're gonna find out.
Someone got to review it every year.
Yeah, there's a handful of them we review every year, but, uh, it, it looks like it's about a, a good five-year process. It just depends on how many we want to do in any given month, and we've, we've reviewed anywhere from three to ten. Sometimes, you know, some of them package, you know, pretty well together, like we, our sped policies are six-twelves. And then, of course, after the unit camera gets done, we always have a couple of months of, uh, updating policies, so maybe we don't review as many because we're, um, we're revising, we're approving lots of new ones, like we got this year. So, it's a multi-year process, and probably when we get through the, the one thousands, uh, we'll do what Mike and I did a few years back, and we'll, you know, gather binders and go through it, all of them together, and make sure they're all up to date. When you get some turnover, sometimes, you know, you, you miss a few things, but they're always all accurate and digitally updated on the, you know, the website, uh, or the app.
Now, move on to number ten, committee reports. Starting with transportation.
Knowing that, I don't know what we really decided, we had a good hash with the bus people, the sports boosters. Some things out in the open, I guess, understood a little more what was going on. I don't know that we really made a recommendation, or came to a recommendation. I mean, we didn't come up with any reason why not to approve it, but.
It was, I think primarily that we're in the market for a bus, right? And, um, how do we feel about the quality of the one that the, the boosters are wanting to purchase? Do we want to accept it, you know, do we, you know, so, a little study of the maintenance record inspection?
And that all came after we had our committee meeting, so that was kind of all, we looked through all that on our own. We never did get together after that and discuss, discuss that end of it. And I think we've all seen all the maintenance records and everything, so. I mean, we found no reason why, you know, to go against it. I don't think it did too much.
No.
Or any, any problems, issues.
No, it seems that the bus is in good order.
We had a good conversation with, like I said, the sports boosters on what they were looking at and wanting to do, and what we could do to help, but. I suppose it seems like that's been a long time.
Yes, it seems like over a month ago, but, but it's been several weeks since we made it.
Sounds good. Budget's on there, we meet?
We were going to after we met with the transportation, and we just decided, we kind of talked about it online all day. No, I never, no.
Yeah, we, we did have, we were gonna meet, and then, uh, we just kind of had a little chatter, kind of informal chatter about, um, just to confirm that, that money's been budgeted for the purchase of the bus, and that we're in the market for one for sure by next year. And whether it would be prudent to, um, use the funds that have been budgeted for a bus to front the purchase of this in the arrangement with the booster. Which I think they're here to talk about when we get to that.
Number, uh, number eleven. Okay, negotiations committee, you guys.
We went to Lincoln, Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, had some good speakers. High cost of increase of insurance, that's another big one. And I just felt like when I was listening to the speakers that just made, about two years ago, when we did it with our, uh, the school, the teachers, I felt like we're pretty lucky. Good negotiations, not some horror stories at all.
Yes, when we were sitting with the lawyer when he was doing his presentation, there's, we are very fortunate here, um, not to deal with some of the things we deal with in bigger schools. It was very informative, there was a lot of things I didn't know, the ignoring start is very good negotiation.
There's a lot of rules and regulations behind negotiations, it's not just getting a room and hash it out.
No.
Dates and.
You have to start by a certain date, if it's not done by a certain date, then you have to, it's a drag, like that.
You talked about each increase in insurance cost, did they put a number, is the?
They did not.
That, that should come any day, we should get the, uh, EHA rates for twenty-four, twenty-five. Which going to affect September one of next year, we should get that any day. And again, it, it, it's been as low as zero, as much as eleven percent since I've been here, so this will be somewhere in between.
I have a feeling it'll go up, just my personal little blue question, you know, educators, in two years it's gone up over two hundred thousand a month. So, that's just for me.
What did our trip score last year for staff? Was it double digits?
Yeah, same, um, I want to say, but I can't think back to our slides from last month, seventeen percent. Because we had several teachers go from either individual or individual and spouse to full family, so we have several more teachers that are on full family than were a couple of years ago. But I'll be able to project that, we'll have that information, well, we should have that information right as we're in the middle of negotiations with PPA, and so we'll be able to calculate that pretty well, based on our current staff.
Sounds like we're gonna get a formal letter from PPA soon to start, correct?
I had an informal invite in the hallway today, so.
But we'll get a formal.
So we'll be ready, yeah, yeah, we'll be ready to get started, so I'll, I'll be pushing out, you know, take requests, uh, within the next week to ten days to have our first simple, you know, formal meeting of recognition, and we can even get a lot done in that first meeting. And, you know, as, you know, Melissa and Deb mentioned too, and I've been to several of these, there's not a whole lot of new information, but anytime you have a lawyer as your presenter, they're there to tell you, you know, when it goes bad, you know, here's the law. And so we spent a couple hours on, when things go bad, this is, you know, this is what will happen, what can't happen. And if C I R gets involved, the Commission on Industrial Relations, they get involved, we're, we don't even get close to that. You know, we're, and I know Deb and Melissa probably talked to, you know, board members from some other communities that maybe have, you know, more tertiary relationship with, with their teachers, and, uh, yeah, it, it's just a pretty simple, easy process, our, my experience has been.
I think the, the most conversation I heard amongst other board members was about the teacher shortage. What are we gonna do, that was another session. Things like different schools are doing incentives, um, gotta be careful of that too. It's a big concern.
I think there's only, what, maybe one or two schools in the whole state that end up in that C I R a year, I mean, it's pretty rare.
Yeah, usually when you get close to it, they settle, they finally settle.
They figure out whether they're gonna win or lose.
Yeah. Yeah. Be, because if you're not between the ninety-eight and one oh two, C I R will simply just adjust you up or adjust you down. If you agree on your array, and if you agree on the data, if both sides agree on the data, and we've not had a problem with that, uh, in your comparison with the schools that you, that you both agree to be compared with, it's, it's not incredibly complicated.
When do you hope to have that wrapped up?
Oh, we've, we've been done by November, by the November meeting in the past, uh, but you have to be done in March by law. But we'll be done by November or December, I would expect.
Maybe we'll get together two, maybe three times. I can go back and forth a couple times in one night, you know, you write a proposal, and you go talk about it, counterperform, and then go talk about it, and collapse.
But Adam Yilk is the lead negotiator this year.
Oh, yes, for P D.
Is Chance still on?
He's still on, uh, but he's anticipating retirement, so he's like, I'm not gonna be here next year, so I don't know that I should be the front voice for the teachers. But he's still on, because he's highly experienced.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, thanks for those reports. Move on to the action items then. Starting with number eleven, discussing possible action, approving the purchase of the Lord Coach Plus, need to exceed ninety thousand dollars with full reimbursement by the athletic boosters by January one, twenty twenty-six. You got some, any boosters, Toby, where you at?
I, I printed up some numbers of what we've done so far for fundraising, just to kind of give you guys an idea of where we are.
Looks like I overlooked a number a little bit, Toby, by seven hundred.
Two K. Yeah. So the, the, the first row, the first, uh, row is, is what's been pledged, basically. The second row, three of the pledges with the donations were, um, like a gift or something that we get, and one of them will do a raffle on, which is a golf cart, two of them are seed donations, and we're gonna do a, uh, like a silent auction or a live auction, we haven't decided that'll be up to sports boosters. How we do that, uh, the donation value on the, in the third line is what those three items are actually worth. That's the retail value, and the first deal, you can see I put a little less just to be on the safe side, you know, in case it doesn't bring market value, I guess. The fourth row is what we have, what we'll have now, cash donations. The next row is what would come over the next twelve months. The raffle, the raffle will take about a year, I think we'll sell tickets for about a year, do the drawing at the alumni golf tournament is what we've talked about. The seed auctions will be, and again, we're, we're talking about it, but November eighteenth is the winner's sports kickoff. So with what's total raised, we would, we need to come up with twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty at the end of the next year. And we'd be good. There's a few names on the bottom there that I've talked to, and they've said they were gonna give a donation, they just haven't told me a number yet. And then I'm still in the process of contacting alumni, parents, grandparents, that kind of thing, you know, if, if any of those people want to give smaller donations, that's awesome, so. Any questions, I guess?
Yeah, you seem pretty nervous.
Yeah.
Really appreciate all the work the boosters do for our school, you guys work hard, and the kids know it, and some of the other parents, thank you for all your efforts.
One other thing I'd like to say is that, um, just as a booster club, um, you know, we've really, obviously, with the scoreboard, uh, the last few years, and this, we've really raised our, our stakes of what we're trying to do, and trying to do more things for, um, the whole school, and obviously, um, a bus like this would affect not just sports kids, but it would affect, you know, elementary kids on field trips, or whatever, um, speech, um, music, so, um, and, you know, we're proud to, to really help out that way, and hopefully, um, you know, this is something that we'll be able to use for a long time to come, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really gonna benefit the kids directly, something like this, they're gonna appreciate that.
And the scoreboard, that's the talk of everybody I sit by. Somebody called her school bougie. Scoreboard now, it was one of my past kindergarters I did not recognize.
It's not a, it's not a, it's not a kindergarten site word?
Not a kindergarten.
Bougie, I don't even know how to spell it.
That gives you context, but you know it me.
I, I figured it out. I figured out who he was. Not seasonable, so.
How soon will they have the bus ready?
Soon as you tell us if you're gonna pay for it. But the wrap, are you talking about with the full wrap, and, I mean?
Well, just, I would assume we'd maybe use it before it's wrapped.
I have it lined up to get it wrapped really fast, yeah.
Won't be long.
One thing we want to do, and we didn't mention that too, is that since it's a community effort, if, I mean, it's boosters, but obviously, when you look at the list, there's a lot of community that maybe, maybe or maybe not, that they're not part of boosters, but they're still donating towards this. So we want to primarily have junior high and high school vote, and we'll have a couple designs, a few designs for them to choose from, and then, uh, maybe even in the community, just so that, um, we can kind of advertise that, you know, as a booster club, we're doing this, but also as a community, you know, we're proud to, to help our school, and let us know your votes, so that's gonna be the plan, and we'll probably make that, maybe not as quick as Alan would like, but fairly quick.
So can you run that by administration before you?
Absolutely, we would, yep. Yeah, we won't have, yeah. You should see the one Darren likes, no.
Maybe not that administration.
It's bougie.
Another thing I just want to make clear too, is, you know, you guys are doing a wonderful job here of this bus and donating it, but once it's donated, it's up to pretty much the A D, who decides who needs to use it for what, I mean, if you're all alright with that, then.
One hundred percent, yeah, we don't wanna, we don't want to be involved with that at all.
Because I can get into, you know, some bad feelings if it goes to kindergarten, school trip instead of the, you know, speech team, or whatever, you know, and, but, uh, we just can't have everybody put their opinion in once it's done.
Oh, absolutely.
Does the school put some of their money in it, they budget for a bus for it?
Repairs, but possibly.
I mean, you have, you have one budget already, so I didn't know how much that was, or?
We budgeted a hundred thousand, uh, for a bus, so, um, those funds, uh, will be set aside or, or prepared for maintenance. We just paid, uh, several thousand dollar maintenance on one of the yellow buses, and so, yeah, buying something new, I mean, there's some risk, I mean, we feel, you feel pretty good that this is a, um, a well-maintained bus, uh, they'll, they'll maintain it at Navigator, uh, but that will, that will come with expense, so, uh, so those expenses will be borne from, you know, well, the general budget and, and the money that was budgeted for this bus, which was pushed to depreciation. You know, can be used for that, and over the course of hopefully several years.
Are we gonna have to make a little bit of investment in tires?
I think it needs six new tires, like, if it's hauling our kids, like, I, I think it needs six new tires right away, which is about eight hundred, eight fifty a tire?
Well, they.
The front ones were brand new.
Yeah. Five seventy-five, uh, when I talked to him specifically, he said, well, eight, I remember him saying that that day we were there, Alan. But, uh, he said that the ones that they put on, when they replace them, were five hundred and seventy-five dollars a piece, so, yeah, there's several thousand dollars right there. Tires, you know, pretty, obviously pretty vital, and you want, you know, quality tires on it, calling our kids around, but.
Is that four tires or six?
Five seventy-five per tire.
How many tires?
Well, I, I wouldn't make that decision necessarily, I think.
I feel it needs six, the two, I feel, I feel that all, like, I mean, if my opinion matters, which, I feel that the front steers were brand new. But I feel like the six rears, and he gave a system, Darren, and he said he rotates, how he rotates the steers through, but the back ones, I mean, the back on the, it's not even a tag axle, because it doesn't come up, but the single, those were, were really poor, then I noticed some chopping on the other, which he said is normal as they rotate them through.
Yeah, but it was still in their fleet, they're using, you know, they, they pulled it off the road for us, right?
Yes.
So, it's sitting there, go by it today. So it, it was coming up pretty soon for them to replace those, so that would likely be something we'd probably just have to move before it's delivered, if possible, I, you know, and check with them.
I think for places to ball it would last a long time, if you started out all brand new. Especially if he's gonna maintain it and rotate it and everything, like, you know.
We'll leave your maintenance record, we'll have the same as on, on the back.
So Alan, when you mentioned having us pay for it, I guess initially, when you brought this to the committee meeting the first time, it sounded like it was a gift.
It is a gift. It was brought to us that the school would loan us the money. I've stated this for the third time. If this is a headache, we have it approved through Midwest Bank, and we'll just borrow the money and go through there. I'm not about a lot of headache.
I thought it was cleaner to, you know, have the school purchase it.
Oh, we're gonna save a lot of.
Save, you know, we're gonna.
Um, they already got forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars in cash, we'd said they could get the forty-five, and that's, we're pretty close anyway. There shouldn't be a problem, anyway, as a budget, maybe we can discuss that, just throw in our notes, and our round some numbers, but, I mean, we're only gonna be, it, that, that might be put down on the bus right away, or come into us right away, I mean, it, it has to support, it's gonna be what, forty-eight, five fifty, anyway.
And we got the hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It's budgeted to use.
It's budgeted to use, and there's no reason, I guess, to not to use it. So, and if they're gonna pay it off, the remainder of that balance anyway by January twenty twenty-six, I would call that a gift, so. I'm fine with it. And it looks like to me, honestly, with, with what they've got, or got planned, they have plans already for fundraisers, um, and they've got four donations coming in, they're probably gonna meet that deadline.
Will they be sold, or possibilities are?
No, they've got, they've got a lot of potential to be sold. Yep, so, Toby's already done a lot of legwork, along with those, like, sports boosters, I, I have no doubt they're gonna get this done by, by January one, twenty twenty-six.
Toby, what do you anticipate revenue on ScoreVision, you know, annually? Toby, what do you anticipate revenue on Scorevision, you know, annually? Because there's several of them they annually.
Yeah, I I was thinking it was, and I'd have to look, fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
At one a minimum.
Yeah.
I mean, you have annual revenue coming in, too, right there. You know, you have, your obligation is eight thousand annually, go for the software maintenance, right? On Scorevision. So you're gonna clear another seven or ten annually, probably. That could go towards this if you need it to, right? And it's not much liability here.
And honestly, there's there's there's, kind of the sky's the limit on that Scorevision.
Sure.
I I mean, if if I or others go out and push more, you know, think of people, there's there's definitely more advertisers that would be interested in it. I had one the other night at the game. My mom said her son wants to advertise, so I contacted him.
Yeah, you got a really good start on it. So are you have any questions you guys have for boosters?
Need to adjust the number on the action item.
Ninety thousand, seven hundred?
Just put it in motion.
I'll I'll make a motion, purchase a motor coach bus not to exceed ninety thousand, seven hundred dollars with full reimbursement by the athletic boosters by January first of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, so we moved to second. Purchase motor coach bus not to exceed ninety thousand, seven hundred dollars. Full reimbursement by the boosters by one one, twenty twenty-six. I will vote myself yes. Devin?
Yes.
Melissa?
I need a minute.
Chance?
No.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
So we will be loaning them ninety thousand dollars even though they don't need it? Because our budget there, I mean, we need to make sure we have all of our bases covered here. From what the total is here, if you subtract ninety thousand, we need to protect ourselves here and make sure that the school is not a bank.
There is a forty-one thousand.
I understood that, but we probably need to change that number. There's no reason to exceed ninety thousand dollars, even had it set at ninety thousand dollars.
The check is gonna come, the book and check is gonna come out of the general funding. With a bus at ninety thousand, seven hundred, and then reimbursement comes back in for us. So the check is gonna match what the motion made when we came. So Toby, you've got the, you've got forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty right now for correct? So, I mean, that's gonna come into the school immediately. So am I correct, Dr. O? I'm gonna have the check will match the motion, right?
I appreciate what you guys are doing. I mean, it means a lot, means a lot to the future of our school. And I'm thankful that you're doing it. But my vote is no, because the school is not a bank. We cannot do this every time.
Okay, well, motion passes four two. Thank you guys for all your work.
Thank you very much.
Number twelve.
We want to let the first ride on the bus though.
You gotta, you gotta get somebody with proper license.
Number twelve, we need to make an adjustment to the classified P T O buyback thing.
Yeah, so I I I believe that the payback for unused vacation days, which P T O is classified vacation, applied to certified folks only, but it applies to all employees. So quite simply, instead of paying half of unused days at fifty dollars, we need to pay all unused days at twenty-five dollars. So it's just a change of the of the language, but not a change at all in thing. Or the expense.
I'll make a motion to accept the revised language to classify P T O. Okay, move to second and accept the revised language for classified P T O. Wyatt?
Yes.
Chance?
Yep.
Melissa?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Self, yes. Mike, cool. Motion carried six of them. Move on to number thirteen, reports, starting with the activity director's report.
Postseason starts this week, so volleyball starts playing conference on Saturday, and that goes through next week. And then volleyball sub-districts are in the next week. We host conference volleyball Saturday. Unless something crazy happens tonight, we will be hosting this weekend for conference. If things stay on track and we win the way we should, we'll be hosting sub-district volleyball as well. And then it doesn't really matter what the end outcome is on Thursday. We'll be hosting first round of playoffs, too. So we got a lot of postseason stuff going on here, if things go the way it should coming up here. And then junior high sports, they transition into winter sports here at the end of this month, November, so.
All right. Fourteen, principals report.
The main thing that I wanted to point out, I guess, is that one of our title requirements is that we provide a family event for the year. And so we've been working hard to plan that for this Friday night. And we've got lots of stuff happening for our elementary families throughout the building and the high school. So we're excited about that and hope to have a large crowd, or planning a large crowd.
That's during the day or at?
Six thirty, Friday night.
Did you get confirmation on the playground equipment?
Um, it is supposed to be delivered tomorrow morning. And I have not heard from Dusty, I think is our builder. Yeah, I have not heard from him when he's coming in, but tomorrow morning is a big day for us, too. We get all that delivered.
We saw Ian Lincoln. Julie?
Julie, yep.
We saw Julie and her, the installer actually has family in the playground, so he's.
He's tied to Vicky Bartak somehow.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and so she's like, you got a heck of a deal, because, I mean, it will, it'll go up quicker, smoother, whatever. Anyway, we're, you're gonna start to see some action behind the school, if you ever see behind the school. But there'll be a whole lot of equipment if it shows up, fall shows up tomorrow.
Yeah.
Whole lot of stuff.
Recess will be a totally different.
They were all worried about it tomorrow when they go out, so we all wanted to watch that.
Well, they have to be fenced out in that area that freezes because of the construction.
Sure. I haven't even heard, Ben told me that. We haven't had any conversations with our installer yet.
They might post down, see how the day by Sunday.
Give them a wrench on the work.
But Julie told me within a week, they're here and it's installed, so.
Pretty exciting.
And he gives us the go-ahead, it'll.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years since I've known how to work this.
Absolutely.
When I talk to Brooke, he doesn't have the pirate ship reassembled out of his house, but it's out there in pieces, but.
I think it's still on a trailer.
No, it's on, it's on, it's on, yeah.
We were pretty, pretty lucky to have Brooke. I'm glad it can be repurposed, you know, and his kids, his kids and whoever else from, you know, Southbound, so it gets a use out of it.
Barely going well since you moved back in?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. We.
Looks nice over there.
Love having him back.
I like the ribbon cutting, that was a great idea.
Thank you.
I had a little regular scissors and some caution tape for it, but that was not good enough for Tim. So she got red ribbon and two foot scissors.
They were awesome. No haircut cut.
No, somebody asked about trying it.
Yeah, yeah. I love it, one kindergartner cut their hair, and that would be my son. All the years of doubt.
Okay, thank you. Fifteen, presidents report. I don't really have anything for presidents report. Move on to sixteen, superintendent report.
Okay, just a few updates. Got a meeting, a phone meeting with our insurance adjuster tomorrow to discuss compensation to the church and the city for use of their space and what the, what they will authorize. I really tried to connect with him today, but wasn't able to do so. So he texted me back later this afternoon and said he'd talk to me tomorrow morning. So, I mean, it's been months ago where he says, yeah, the insurance will cover that expense, but exactly, I would, I need to know from him whether it's something that's authorized by you, whether it's just a bill sent to us from the church and the city, or whether he thinks, I think, a reasonable amount. As I've talked to Jeremy and and Gail, you know, back and forth a little bit about about what's what's reasonable, what that could be. It's not really practical to determine, you know, utility use, right? Because that was the additional expense that both the city and the church would have had by giving up, by by giving that space, you know, for our use. And so obviously, that wouldn't be a very big amount. And there certainly do, you know, some compensation, you know, more than that, just for inconvenience, at the very least. But so I should have some good information tomorrow. Ideally, ideally, there's no taxpayer expense to it, so no school expense to that. And that insurance will cover an amount that both the church and the city, you know, believe is generous and reasonable. So they did start to pay out different things we did, for example, our iPad reimbursement. Nothing happened with regard to the investigation on that, we just don't have enough. I, you know, I talked to chief, just don't have enough enough reasonable conclusion on, to to charge anybody on that. But we were reimbursed fully for that, as well as any other expenses we've had, which hasn't really been a whole lot. Need you to know that Schedule D's been posted. So Superintendent Pay Transparency Act has to have the current superintendent contract posted plus the Schedule D, which was approved last month as per our budget. So those, both of those things are posted, so we are aligned with that. S R two will be done any any day. I expect to find out from the Department of Ed that our last request for S R two money has been approved. We got seventy-one thousand, one twenty-three last month, and S R three, we had thirty-two thousand. That was, S R three was five hundred and some thousand total, right? And the the overwhelming majority of that went to our exact project. So we got thirty-two, nine eighty balance. We'll eat that up next year, and it has to be gone by September of next year. So next year will be a robust summer school, and we'll be very generous with, because we gotta, we gotta use it, use it or lose it, right? American Civics Committee needs to meet, I had that on last month, I gotta on getting this month, so we gotta get that done. If you haven't been in to see, you know, the east wing, encourage you to do so. I do expect guaranteed roofing to be here by the end of this month to complete the the cosmetic flashing, gutters and downspouts. It still looks unfinished, obviously, it is, but that is the permanent roof. Some people still think that's the temporary roof up there. So it, but it's not been, you know, the finish work is not done. And then we got a rooftop unit that's gonna be placed up there in November yet. And then phase two next May will be the whole rest of the west wing and the kitchen hood and vent system. So that that'll be phase two. You remember that we had those folks that were doing that documentary last spring from Who Taught You? That came for the whole day?
Yes.
Well, they lost their funding. And so that's that that whole pro, that whole documentary has been shelved, hopefully just temporarily. We anticipated them to come back and kind of do that, that little follow-up. So I love public schools and Who Taught You? Both of those designed to promote public education, promote education in general, promote teaching. Both of them have lost their grant funding. So I needed to kind of let you know, hey, whatever happened with all of that? Well, it's been, it's been put on pause. The audit is done. You know, Kelly should get a something, something nice. I mean, they, she's primarily who takes care of the audit, quite honestly. I mean, she runs the day-to-day business of the school with regards to, you know, pay, they pay bills and such. So she spends a lot of time preparing for them. We've got a good relationship with our with our auditors from Dana Cole, so it went as smooth as maybe it's probably ever had, ever has.
They're down a couple heads, so they're behind. I'm still waiting for some journal entries or some other fun stuff.
Yes, that they'll probably say, oh, we found this, Kelly, can you prove this document? She'll take care of that, and that'll be all right. Bob got rid of three junk buses at five hundred dollars a piece, so that frees up some space. So this motor coach will be parked temporarily at Toby's new shop, the old Watson building, until we can refabricate the bus shed for it. That is the long-term solution plan, because we want it sheltered. Toby's offered some of his space. Now, he's got some big part machinery that's gonna take up a lot of that eventually. So we do have a plan for housing that motor coach. But Bob's pretty excited to finally get rid of three junk buses. Now, we'll fill this shed back up, you know, eventually, before too long. State convention is November fifteen to seventeen. Myself, Mr. Souza, Mr. Rasmussen, and Mrs. Dorr are registered to attend. That's, this bad boy, there's still play, there's still, there's still space. If if anybody else is interested in that. There is your enrollment summary update and my balance list as of today.
Flashing on the roof of the gym will be done on the.
Yes, 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 sorry, you're right, Mike. That's expected to be done as well this fall. The, because, yeah, that's a pretty big eyesore yet. Obviously shows the evidence of what happened on July tenth. But that is to be done yet this fall as well, thank you.
So is there a professional cleaning of the library and the church when they got that?
Um, I had, I had Gail and Jeremy walk through with Gail and Bill to approve how things looked. Gail had to, you know, clean up a couple of things that in the library, but both got thumbs up. Good to go. So our guys did the professional cleaning. We didn't send floor tech over there.
Well, thanks, thanks again to the city and church.
For sure.
For helping us out.
Yep.
Lots happened in three months.
It's a big, big part of the whole story, you know, that went statewide and even nationwide, you know, was, you know, so lucky that a block away, we had the space for three full classrooms for six weeks.
Thanks, Kelly, for the audit work.
Oh, you're welcome.
But she was literally.
Okay, well, that gets us to the end of the agenda for the journey. Good luck here, Sam.
Yeah, thanks.